It's my pleasure to administer the oath to the new council. If each of you will raise your right hands and repeat after me. I instate your name.
I, John Cannon.
Do swear or affirm
Do swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
Bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
Support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of
Execute the office of
Wycomico County Council Member
Wycomico County Council Member.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Congratulations.
If I could have you come and each of you sign the test book for me. It's up here, or we can, whatever is convenient. Ladies and gentlemen, and people of Wycomico County, you have before you the County Council of Wycomico County, Maryland. Gentlemen, the Charter of Wycomico County, Article 3, Section 303, Officers. At its first meeting in December of each year, the council shall elect from among its members by a vote of the majority of the total numbers of the county members established by this charter, a President and a Vice President. The President, or in his absence, the Vice President, shall establish the agenda and preside at all meetings. On all questions before the council, the President and the Vice President shall have and may exercise the vote to which each is entitled as a council member. Are there any nominations or nominations for the office of President?
I nominate John Cannon.
A motion for Mr. Cannon, is there a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Mr. Cannon, it appears you have been elected by acclamation. Would you conduct the election for Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. I'd like to open the floor at this time for nominations for Vice President. If we could.
Nominate Matt Holloway?
Matt Holloway has been nominated, second. Any other nominations? Seeing none, the nominations have been closed. I would say the same as Mr. Kramer. Being that there are no other nominations, I'd like y'all to join me and congratulate Matt Holloway, Vice President of Congress.
I'd like to congratulate John Cannon as President of Wycomico County.
You'll have to read your signs upside down, gentlemen. Mr. Hall, Mr. Kilmer, Mr. Matt Holloway, Mr. John Cannon, Mr. Joe Holloway, Mr. Davis, Mr. Dodd.
Good evening, ladies and sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's all I have for now. Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Continuing with tonight's agenda, I would like to call on Mr. Baker, if I could, please.
Yes, thank you. Congratulations to all the new members and to the returning members. We have one item of business for the council's attention tonight. It's Resolution 151-2014. It is the third step in the county's capital improvement project process. The first step, of course, was the capital improvements program and the capital budget, and then the capital bond bill. And this is a bond resolution that would select projects for actual funding in the bond market. It's being presented to the council tonight at the request of the county executive. And as for the issuance and sale of Wycomico County bonds on the full faith and credit of two separate series of bonds totaling in the aggregate $10,930,000. The bond resolution sets forth all the details of the process of selling bonds. The two series are detailed on page two, I'm sorry, on page four. Is the first series, which is a tax-exempt series, and it lists the projects there. Bennett Middle School, Solid Waste Enterprise Fund, State's Attorney's Building and the Contingency Fund. The second series is on the next page, page five, which is the Purdue Stadium Restoration and Modernization Project. Just by way of background, that is a taxable series. And under the bond laws, when you're funding a project that's going to be used in some sense for private, and Purdue Stadium, as everyone knows, is subject to a lease to a private company. If that meets certain criteria, it's taxable. So that series is taxable. With that...
Thank you, Mr. Baker. I'd like to entertain a motion for discussion of Resolution 151-2014.
So moved?
Second. Motion's second. Discussion. If I, if I could, please, will we have the county executive? If you, Bobby, would you mind explaining, like, just reviewing your thought process here and exactly what changes we're looking at? Thank you.
Glad, glad to take this time. As you'll notice, from the original conception of the bond from the previous administration, it was $16,529,000. Our total balance as of this time is $10,930,000. The changes in that have come over several different projects. The first project, of course, would be the completion of Bennett Middle School. Bennett Middle School was originally scheduled to go $5,735,000. We have been able to reduce that down to $4,235,000. And if you've got any questions on that, Mr. Mackel can answer those questions as to how that was taken care of. But it was an addition that the state had given the Board of Education roughly $1.5 million more, and we did not have to come up with it from our side. So the second part would be the purchase of the State's Attorney Building, $3,959,500. Proposing to leave that in full because that'll save us some money on our weekly or monthly rental rate that we are now paying of $25,000 a month. So we made that agreement, I guess, about two years ago. So I'd like to go ahead and make that purchase and carry that on through. The next item would be the lower Wycomico River dredge material placement. And the second one after that would be the middle river. Basically, these two are synonymous with one another because what they have, this is to carry the dredge materials that we have in the Wycomico River. The importance of keeping the Wycomico River open to river traffic is monumental. Each barge that this, we see come up the river contains roughly 150 tractor-trailer loads of oil. So that would put that much more strain on our roads. It would put that much more strain on our system totally. So we feel that this is a good way. We have to keep our grain coming in, our agri coming in. So this is why we're asking to go ahead and have this ready. What we have to do is furnish the land for the Army Corps of Engineers to be able to do this dredging. Upon our completions of buying this land and setting this land up, the Army Corps of Engineers will come in and build the berms. And from that point on, then it's on the Army Corps of Engineers. But we have got to furnish the land and get it prepped up, ready for it. So roughly, each project will cost $500,000. AW Purdue Stadium Restoration and Modernization Project, $1.5 million is coming in from Seventh inning Stretch is the company that rents the Shorebird Stadium from Wycomico County at this point in time. In order for them to continue their lease with Wycomico County, the Baltimore Orioles have put so many restrictions and things of modernization that we have got to do. So this is basically, this is a profit-making venture for us as far as keeping the stadium rented out to the Shorebirds. So I'm asking that we go ahead and go forward with that so we can complete the $1.5 million renovation, which will in turn give us the lease with Seventh inning Stretch, which will in turn give them the lease for the Baltimore Orioles, keep the Shorebirds here in Wycomico County. Those projects are the ones that I have asked to be completed onto this revised plan at a total of $10,930,000. Be glad to answer any questions, if you've got any, at this point in time.
Any council questions? Now, the, the projects that you decided to take off the original CIP, which have either been taken off or postponed, maybe another word for it, that would be your discretion.
Sure.
Could you explain just those line items?
More than happy to. The first one, of course, being the West Side Collector Road. We don't know right now how much money we're going to be able to get from the state. We've got a new governor going in, and I had the opportunity today to speak to Governor Hogan. And we don't know exactly how much is going to be allocated toward the state of Maryland. So for us to go out and bond this right now, I don't want to obligate any more interest payments and payments for us for a long term till we know because we don't know if we're going to get the disparity grant. We don't know if we're going to get the educational funding grants from, from the state that we've been getting over the past even four to six years. So that is part of that for the West Side. I just would like to put that on hold for this year, and hopefully we'll be in better shape by next year, and we'll be able to come back and revisit that situation. The other one would be the upgrade of Youth and Civic Center. That's another project, talking to Governor Hogan today about. We have no idea how much money will be given into, be able to be matched. And this was a match. $1 million from Wycomico County, $1 million to be given to us from the state of Maryland. We don't know. It's, it's kind of up in the air, and we're not going to know until the governor takes position in January 21st. So that I'm asking to take off the plan. The other one, of course, is the civic, excuse me, excuse me, the West Side School, West Salisbury School Replacement. And it's not so much that I'm asking for this to be taken off. I'm asking for it to be postponed till we know a little bit more of what we're going to be able to get from the government, state of Maryland. But also, I have had a chance to go out and visit the school and realize there are some things that need to be done. But I'm not so sure that we can't look at remodeling, renovation, rather than replacement. To, to go on the line right now for $1.2 million, it's a $27 million total project. And this is just the start of it. This is not just $1.2 million for the school. It's a $27 million project, what it's going to cost us if we get into it. So I'm asking that we have time to set back and go through that. It's not saying that we cannot go through this and pull it out of our fund balance later on if everybody feels that that's a thing to do once we have our team go in and take a look at it. But I would like to work with the school board, Dr. Fredrickson, to keep, continue to go out there and visit the schools and, and see what we're going to need in a longer-range plan. But right now, with the, with the new governor coming in, we're just, we're just up in, you know, we have to, got to, we've got to get our bonds up to market now. But we won't have any idea until close to legislature in, in March before what we're going to be able to get. So that's why I'm asking the council to cut it down to the minimum so we can go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Executive. Questions, Councilman Dodd?
Well, I just want to point out, first I want to apologize. I have another obligation with my kids. So I promised them after the swearing-in that I'd take them to Bennett Middle School so they could participate in their course.
Their, their left.
No, they're getting, I've got an eye on them. But I, I feel like a lot of us in the room feel some disappointment that we, as I think as a whole, had to pull this, the school off of the bond tonight. I know a lot of people are here for that. And I know a lot of those... I know a lot of us support schools. We're going to continue to support schools. And I have faith that this council is just putting this on hold temporarily, and will continue to support the schools.
Well, I hope so. I want very much to support the schools. We do need to finish the two projects we have going right now, Bennett Middle and Bennett Senior. They need to be wrapped up completely before we obligate ourselves for another $26 million.
Yes, I understand that. And I'm, I'm hoping that the public will understand what is going on right now. I do believe this council firmly will hold to their, their promise to support the schools.
I hope so.
Yes, Councilman...
Well, to echo his sentiments, but I ran on a platform of supporting the schools along with bringing, I mean, more jobs here. And one of the things we talked about was how to get the jobs here. We have better schools. And for West Salisbury, I mean, it's been pushed on the back burner for several years. I mean, to go look at it, I went to that school, first grade, and that school is exactly when I went there. There's no air conditioning in that school. And now I transport kids from that school, and they get on my bus in the afternoon, and they're drenched sweating. And this is 2014. To say we got an elementary school in our county, and we're trying to grow, to say we don't have air conditioning, and we got kids suffering is a tragedy.
Well, I understand that.
Council comments? The question I have, which I had asked earlier, with the postponement of this project, how might that impact funding from the state of Maryland? Would they drop us off the list completely? Might there be measures that we're taking now?
We don't know that there's going to be that much money towards new building of schools once the Hogan administration takes over.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
We don't know how much money the Hogan administration will allow for the building of new schools once they take over. That's what we've got to find out first. So... Well, I'm sorry. If you, if you know more than I do, I'll be glad to talk to you about it. But I spoke with Governor Hogan today, and he does not know how much he's going to allow towards the building of new schools. And I'll be glad to discuss that with you.
Councilman Hall.
I was talking to Governor Hogan also, Governor-elect Hogan, today. And I brought up the subject that we had, we thought we would take this off the bond bill. And he said that was probably a good idea for the time being. Interestingly enough, I asked him, you know, what kind of debt load was being left. And he said they hadn't got that figured out. But it was a lot more than what was announced earlier, so. I would say that I think everybody on this council would agree if that school's not had anything done to it since it was built, it needs renovating or replacing. I've not been out there to look at it yet, but I plan on taking a tour of it. But we still have two projects in the works that needs to be wrapped up. And I think it would be wise to get those done first. And they'll be done soon, right, Dr. Fredrickson?
Yep.
Okay. And I think that should be... We've got other schools in the county that need attention. So, and I think that's what we need to do is, is to circle the wagons a little differently and go out and look and see what needs to be done first. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hall. Any other council comments?
No.
Yeah, I would just like to say that as someone who has a child in public school, I do recognize the importance of having quality schools and quality structures. I appreciate the fact that the new county executive has suggested that all of us on the council get together and go tour not only this school, but other schools around the county to see what the needs are so we can see firsthand. It's a little daunting coming in your first night with no experience on the council before to adequately evaluate some of these issues. And so having a little time to study and seeing what the state does is, I think, a prudent course. But I, I think we'll all hold Bob to his word that he's going to revisit this, so.
I expect you to do it. I too, you know, want our schools to be the best they can be for the children of Wycomico County. So I, I just want us to be prudent and timely.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, I have one comment, I think, that with this projected bond sale change, the council does not have the privilege of adding any items to this projected bond sale.
Right. You have the right on my budget in January, February, to add to it towards education. On the bond sale, you do not.
That's correct. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Just for clarification for the audience, what Councilman Hall was stating, which was a very good point. As the procedure has been established through the Charter of Wycomico County between the executive and legislative branch, this council does not have the authority to add this school project into the capital improvement plan as it is today. Just so you're aware of that. That is just procedure, as, as has been established by Charter. So, you know, we would be glad, I would be glad. Executive Culver, I appreciate your, your time. I think all the questions have been answered. But I would open this up to the public if you would like to make comments. Keeping in mind, of course, that there will be other times to make comments as well because this will have to be addressed at another time as well because as far as tonight is concerned, the budget that the executive gives us, we have the authority to cut things from this, this capital improvement plan. But we do not have the authority to add this school back in at this time. Okay? I would also ask that you try to be brief and not to repeat yourself, or repeat something that someone else may have already said. Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm Ron Willie. I'm a lifelong resident of Wycomico County and worked 44 years in its school system and am presently serving as President of the Board of Education. I came here tonight to make a plea that you could reconsider the fact that the West Salisbury School Project has been taken from the bond bill. But based upon what you've just said, that's probably a done deal. I feel I must express, though, my concern that this decision was made. We have two schools left in our county without air conditioning. West Salisbury is one of them. Those folks have waited patiently for their time to come. They desperately need a new school. From a facilities standpoint, to try to renovate and bring it up to 21st century standards, someone said to me last week, you know, they've been out looking at our school and talked about putting air conditioners in each classroom window. Is that really what we want to do for our schools in the county? That not only is not economically sound, it will not solve the problem we have for technology. West Salisbury does not have the same state of technology that are in our other schools. And it's needed for 21st century teaching for students and teachers and their families. These folks have surely waited their turning line. Now let me speak to the turning line. Presently, we have funding for this project to go forth through IAC in Annapolis. We're in line. But when we step out of line, there is no guarantee, Mr. Culver, that next year, should we decide we want to get back in, that we're going to be first in line. There are other counties waiting for that place in line. When we've lost our place in line, it may not be next year. It may be five years before we're able to get back in the planning process for this school. To say I'm extremely disappointed would be an understatement. But not just me. Every member of our board was looking forward to us moving this project on. Not only does this provide a state-of-the-art school for West Salisbury students and their families, it also opens up an early learning center for our infants and toddlers program in the Chipman School. It allows our school system to step forward. And during the campaign, with but few exceptions, every one of you talked about your commitment to making education stronger in Wycomico County. How do we make it stronger when we've just taken a step backward? And that's what we've done. This is not a step forward. This is a step backward. My prayer is that we don't lose our place in line, but I don't think there's any assurance of that. And tonight, with what I've heard, education in Wycomico County has taken a severe blow.
Thank you, President Willie. You have, you do have to come to the podium. When you, when you come to the podium, could you state your name and, and your address, please?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Danielle Thomas. And I'm from Salisbury, Maryland, 501 Robinson Street. And I just want to make a comment. I just want to say, as a parent, I'm disappointed, disheartened at what I just heard. Sometimes I don't have time to come out here. And that's why we elect y'all so that we can trust that we don't have to worry about going back and forth with y'all and that you can make the decisions that you need to make in the best interest of us. As a taxpayer, I am concerned because when you go to West Salisbury, you may not find that it's beat up and in need of repair. And that's to give them credit. They take care of their school. They do not allow the children to tear it down. I mean, that school's been there forever. My mother went there, and she's almost 60. But you look good for it. I remember going there as a little girl to do, do little projects and whatnot. And my daughter, who is 19, who graduated from there, who is now a student at Notre Dame University in Baltimore, Maryland, went there. And on the hottest days, I would say, you don't have to go. She loved that school so much that she would go, hot and all. And the teachers there, I've watched them age, and I've watched them grow. They deserve to be in a school where they can be comfortable and help their students and whatnot. As a taxpayer, I'm concerned because I went to Bennett Middle last week. I work in the school system. I work with kids. I work with kids with behavioral problems. And you've got choices next door, children who are behavioral problem. And I, I'm sorry, but the ADHD, all this medication, we need to table that because when they get 18, we're putting them in prison for life. They need to learn to control their behavior. They're sitting over there with air conditioning and no type, I mean, living up. Air conditioning, nice, and the kids next door who are behaved. And my baby, he's right there. He is not no saint, no angel. But right now, he's been quiet this whole thing. So that shows that he is capable, and he knows how to do it. He deserves to be sat in air conditioning, not somebody who's next door tearing the doors off the hinges. I went to Bennett Middle last week for our American Education Week. They're tearing that school apart right now, and it's old. What are they going to do with the money that we are taxpayers are investing in that? What are they going to do to the new school? And how long will that school last? I would have preferred that they took Lynn Avenue and West Salisbury, killed two birds with one stone, and did that, and did those over, and then did those. We take care of our babies first. Right now, I mean, as a voter, I am listening, and I'm paying attention. And I'm 37 years old. And I've been voting for over 18 years now. And I do vote. And I'm getting older, so I do voice my opinion. And I talk to my parents, and I encourage them to vote. So if this school doesn't get what it needs, I am going to be out there. And the best way, there is plenty of ways to skin a cat. Not to argue, fuss, act a fool, but to vote and to encourage other people to vote. And your teachers are voters. Your, their kitchen staff, they are voters. That school is not going to look as bad That school is not going to look as bad as you think it is when you walk in it, because like I said, they take pride in their school. They do not let kids tear it up. And for it to have been there as long as it has, that is one of the cleanest schools around here, and I commend them for it. So it shouldn't be off the hinges and tore up. It just shows that they have taken care of and put pride in what we have allowed them to have. And it's only befitting and right that we not punish people or give them something because they tore it up, but to reward them for taking care of what they do and letting our tax money speak for it. Thank you. And y'all have a nice night. I can't sit home.
Kim Watson, citizen of Salisbury, businesswoman in Salisbury, and a parent of a kindergartner at West Salisbury Elementary. I've heard lots of things, and I'll reflect on a couple of things. First of all, I work in the construction industry, so I'm not just talking crap, I know what I'm talking about. And when you say to me that you're going to put air conditioners in those windows, you're crazy, because that building will not hold that electrical power. I know that, I've been there. I've been on the phone with the Board of Education to find out if we can put air conditioners in there. That's a no-go. I can tell you that before you ever walk over there. Those of you who have not visited, I appreciate the fact that you want to do that. Here's the problem with that. You're going to go, what, this month? My daughter, second grade of kindergarten, she came home, when I went to pick her up, it was ninety-eight degrees in her classroom, ninety-eight degrees, and then I called the board, and they say, "You could have kept her home." You want me to sacrifice my daughter's education because you think more things in this county are important than my daughter's education? That's not cool. That's not going to happen. I, you know, you guys are just now coming in, and I understand, I'm going to sit up here, and I'm going to say whatever, and you guys are going to do whatever you want. But I am a citizen of this county, and we voted you in here, and this is not getting off to a good start. You, sir, I appreciate what you do, I understand that you're looking at the bottom line, which is numbers. Your daughter, I understand, teaches at Beaver Run Elementary. No? Not true. Okay, well, if you do, just in case she does, choose not to admit it, whatever, Beaver Run is behind West Salisbury in this line. So every time that you move, you're just pushing our kids back, and all you're telling your citizens of the county is that there are more important things in this county than education. And I'm here to tell you, as a parent, as a businesswoman, it's not acceptable, and I will not stand for it.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, I'll be brief. My name is Wendy Catlin. I live at 108 Carolyn Avenue, Salisbury, Maryland. No, I don't have any students, I don't have any children or grandchildren at West Salisbury. But I remember back in 1986, I was a young mother, and I was, my child was in kindergarten at Northwestern in Mardella. I was the PTA president, we needed some renovations, we advocated, and we were blessed in that we got those. But I remember seeing that list that everybody talks about, they're on the list. West Salisbury was the next on the list. I have seen that list over and over and over for years. It is time, that community, those students, that faculty and staff, they deserve better than what we're able to give them in this county. Thank you.
I am a part of the staff at West Salisbury. I have been there since 1982. I have heard about that list several times. Oh, you're going to get, we're going to do something, we're going to do something. Well, never has come up. We're always doing patchwork. Our ceiling's leaking. It's terrible, terrible heat. It's time that we get something. It's time.
Thank you. Any other comments? Good evening.
My name is Helen Schostal. I'm a resident of Wycomico County, taxpayer. It seems to make a big difference. If you're a citizen, it should only make a difference. I taught for forty-one years in a neighboring county, but all my children went to school in this county. I remember when my son went to Bennett Middle, and they had huge chicken fans that did nothing to blow hot air around. And I remember when we fought to try to have it renovated, and people would say to me, "Well, when I went to school in sixty-two, we didn't have air, and it didn't bother us." But times are different, lifestyles are different, kids are different, the technology is different. If you run computers, you need air-conditioned rooms. If you want to have the technology, you need air-conditioned buildings. And one of the things that happens, every time you put it off, it costs more. People keep talking about the bottom line, and I know that many of you ran on platforms of holding the line and reducing taxes and trying to manage the budget, and that is a huge task. But every time you postpone these buildings, it costs the taxpayers more money in the long run. And you can't say to some kid, "Well, we'll do it later." Five years later, these kids are gone, and their opportunities for a quality education is gone. I would suggest that maybe you don't accept this budget, because you can't add anything new.
Any other comments? Good, seen none. Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name is Kim Hudson. I am a board member for Wycomico County Public Schools and also a resident of Wycomico County. I would like to say congratulations to those of you that are newly elected, and to thank all of you who have served in this capacity, who have served well our community for your time and your service and commitment to our county. I would be remiss if I didn't come out here tonight and share my disappointment as well of the monies that have been cut from the bond, monies that were already in the capital improvement plan, monies that will now be taken from West Salisbury, and monies from Bennett Middle. These are all funds that have already been budgeted for. Much has been said tonight, and I share in many of the sentiments that have been shared. Education has got to be a top priority in our county, and the only way we make it a top priority is when our decisions reflect that. So I encourage you to continue communicating with the Board of Ed, that we work together to make this the best we can for all of our students and our residents in our county. I look forward to working with all of you, and I thank you for your time and your service.
Thank you. Good evening.
I'm Melva Wright, and I actually serve as the principal at West Salisbury Elementary School. And really, the only thing that I really want you to see is the amount of support that's in this room tonight for the West Salisbury project. This project is of major impact to our school community, and so I want you to see the kind of community support that is here tonight for this project. Everyone that is here, from our community, from our faith-based partners, from the West Salisbury staff, from students, would you all please stand at this time? There are people out in the hallway, and I need them to come in, because I really want you to see the number of people that came tonight in support of this project. This project means quite a bit to our community, to our West Salisbury community, and I just want you to see the kind of support that we have here tonight, and the disappointment, major disappointment for all of us. Not so much that I have better working conditions, I've worked eighteen years of my thirty-three year career in one building, and it has been at West Salisbury. And not so much for the comfort even of my staff, where they deserve a comfortable place to work, like many of you have. But this is for the educational advancement of the students that we serve at West Salisbury, three hundred and nine of the best ever in Wycomico County or anywhere else, and I speak on behalf of that student body. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
I am Elder Chris Lightfoot, and I am also from Salisbury. And I have three children, the fourth in Florida, but each one of my children attended West Salisbury. And I'm only here to speak to you to let you know that everything has a foundation. We can talk about buildings, and we can talk about funding, but our children are our foundation. And if we don't give them a place where there's a comfortability and a place where they can come and concentrate on their education, then this county is in trouble. We must take our children in a high priority, because they are our future. We must give them something that they are in need of, and we must not make excuses why a place cannot be built. Many things have always said can't be, but sometimes when we let something be too long, then it won't be. But if we take our minds and put them together, and put our children first, and give them a foundation, a foundation where they can become the next doctors, the next lawyers, the next pastors, but it all starts with a foundation. And if that foundation stays the same, then there'll be no growth. So we must put our children first, and even if you don't have children at West Salisbury or children in school, we must know that they are our future. So when you're debating and when you're deliberating, think of your children, think of the children of this county, and where you want them to be in the next five, six, ten, twenty years. You must think of the future, because when there's a crack in the building, it's going to tumble.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Shelley Hall. I'm a resident of Salisbury, Wycomico County resident also. Tonight, we were given a list of things on the bond that were cut and things that were added. We've talked about the bottom line. Obviously, our needs outweigh our funds to cover everything, that's a given. But when we're promised money, and that has gone through, and our schools, our teachers, our students, our families are expecting it, and then it is cut, what message does that send about the value of education? Other things are more important? Look at the list of what we're covering. Is a Shorebird Stadium more important than the education of our children, our school buildings? Just putting it out there.
My name is Ruth Mariner. I've been a lifelong citizen of Wycomico County. I've been here through some of the turmoil with the fighting in our council, and I've been here for education, went from nothing to awesome, because we finally bringing technology into the classrooms for our kids, we're making a level playing ground for our children. Our children at West Salisbury, and I'm a staff member, we do not have a level playing ground that the other schools have in our county and counties in Wycomico, in Maryland. We don't yet. We have children that by noon, they're done, on the days that it's ninety and ninety-five and ninety-eight in our classrooms. They're done. And it's hard to, especially in the critical months of August and September and October, when it's that hot in our classrooms, that's the key months, they're their foundation months. That's the teaching their letters, their sounds, they can't go on to read without that. But you're asking us to do that. You're holding us accountable. We're held accountable now, they want to base teacher raises on child performance, but you're making us do, have the child performance based on kids with a handicap. I mean, basically, they have a disability. They're work, living, they're working to learn, and they're with us longer, they're with us during the day more than they with, are with their parents. They see me in my classroom more than they see their parents in a day. And it just needs to be better quality. They, you come, you can come, you can tour it. You're not going to see our school looking back. Let me tell you what happened. Three years ago, chronically sick all winter, one year, had to go to the doctor, found out it was because there was mold. My classroom looks good today, only because three summers ago, everything was taken out of my room, literally. I had to totally pack my room up, because they had to come in and remove mold-infested carpet. And then in the process, they found asbestos in my classroom. So three classrooms were found with asbestos in it in my building. This is West Salisbury. Last Christmas, over the Christmas break, a water pipe busted in the ceiling of my classroom and in the hallway just outside of it. It had to stay open without the ceiling tiles replaced, while we waited till a break that asbestos teams could come in to re-tape the pipes and fix them, because our pipes are wrapped with asbestos. Now, if your grandchild or children were at our school right now, would you want them in buildings with asbestos? That's known to have asbestos in it? Would you? I mean, asbestos is a pretty dangerous thing. It takes team of men in special suits to come in and remove it. So, you know, you think about it, put yourself in our situation, would you want to be working there every day? We just walked in yesterday morning, this morning, had water running down our wall. In the middle of reading instruction, I had three Hispanic men come into my classroom today to look to see where we were having water leakage, stopped instruction because of it, or instruction, because we had, just last summer or the time before, they were on the roof repairing it. I came in to find my technology sitting in a pool of water one Monday morning after a storm. So I had to start, and every night before I left, putting a bucket of water there in case it rained that night when I wasn't there, so that my computers didn't get ruined. So if you don't do it now, it's only going to cost us more money down the road, because we're going to have to replace this stuff. And I don't know about you, but I know what I spend out of pocket on my classroom in a year, which is two to three thousand dollars on my own money to make my room comfortable for my children, hands-on and interactive. Come on, guys, you got to help me out with some money here, too. I can't do it all, we can't do it all, we can't keep making our school look great without your help. I mean, just come out, you're welcome to come to room five if you show up, I'm glad to show it. I actually have a curtain covering up my heating unit right now, because it is peeling so bad. So, and I don't want the kids playing with it. So you're welcome to come, you can see the ceiling tiles that are being replaced, you can see the chip paint that's peeling, it probably has lead in it. So we need your help. Put yourself in our shoes, if you were a teacher at our school, if you were a parent with a child at our school, or if you were a child at our school, would you want to continue to go and have to learn in these circumstances? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a resident of Wycomico County, a member of the county school board, a very proud former educator in this school system for thirty-two years, a proud parent of two children who graduated from schools here. So I have lots of connections. My husband used to say I was old enough for my wants not to hurt me. Well, you've heard a lot of wants, but they're not just wants, they're needs. At this special time of year, we concentrate in this community as a family. We're always reaching out to help others. We hear on local television stations that we can send in Christmas cards with gifts. At my church, we have a program called Santa's Angels, where we work year-round, and one of the things we gather is school supplies for children, so that come Christmas time, when the materials they were given in the fall are worn out, they have new things to start the second semester with. Those are needs for children in our community. We have got to take care of our assets. Buildings and our infrastructure are our assets. Our teachers, our principals, and our staffs are assets. I go across the bay to quite a few meetings in Annapolis, where I represent Wycomico County. They say, "You're from where? Oh, that poor system, where you don't get anything?" But I say, "Oh, but we got Bennett Middle." But I say, "Oh, but we got Bennett Middle. We have this wonderful new facility where our families and our children know that our council and our people support education." We needed that. We have that wonderful list you've heard people speak about, and we hear that West Side's been on that list, and it's been pushed further and further down. Those children in that school, those teachers in that building, those parents who visit, that community surrounding that school need a building that's safe, that they can feel pride in. I want to go to Annapolis, to the legislative meetings where I represent Wycomico County, and feel pride again that my community, my council, my executive support education. Yes, I know, it's a want, but it's a need. This is a time of year when we give presents, we give gifts to people. Sometimes I have people on my list that are naughty, and they don't get anything. But then I start feeling guilty, and I reconsider. Lists can be reconsidered. They can be reflected upon. And yes, I know some of my colleagues are looking at me and saying, "Dear Lord, English teacher, please be quiet." But I have to say this. Our greatest asset is our children. I'm old enough that I collect Social Security. I hope when some of you who aren't old enough to do that are ready, that there's still a system and that these little darlings we're educating can work enough to earn to pay your Social Security because the children I helped educate are paying mine. My greatest asset is my personal children, and it's the students that I see around town who say, "Thank you, Dr. Elmore. Thank you, Mrs. Elmore. You taught me well." And I want you to meet my child who goes to Bennett Middle, or my child who's at Beaver Run, or my child who's at West Salisbury. They're proud to be here, but they don't know what they're missing. They don't know what I hear about when I go, when I hear about the Montgomery Counties that bemoan the fact that, gee, they got cut $2 million, but they still got however many more. I know times are tough. I know we don't want more taxes. Dear Lord, I heard that every day in my life. Carolyn, we cannot raise taxes. I understand that, but somewhere you got to find a way. You got to find a heart. You got to find a place where you can dig, cut something. I know no one wants to be cut, but education is important. And if we don't prepare these children, some of whom come to school with ankle bracelets because they can't behave as children, if we don't meet that need. You've invested tons of money in our computers, and we thank you for it. The computers at West Salisbury aren't going to last because not only are they reigned upon, but in that heat, they don't perform as well. Our children don't perform as well when they come from schools like that, when they compete with kids across the bay. And I'm sorry to tell you, there are students on the eastern shore of Maryland who have more money invested into their education, their technological education. They can test better because the environment's better for them to take the test. They've had practice with computers. And Mr. Culver, I am glad you won your election. I hope you will accept my congratulations because I really believe in you. And I really believe you'll find a way somehow to take the precious present of today and help us maximize it in this season of the year. It is the Christmas season, and we do look to the community and for our elected officials to help us provide presents for these children, the present of a good education and a quality building where they can learn from teachers and principals who have the comfort to put their needs first ahead of the needs of a building that's falling apart. I thank all the council members who worked so hard to help us with Bennett Middle, all the time that you have sacrificed personally, all the time that your families sacrificed when you were away from them. And I know those grandchildren are calling you, some of you, and I appreciate the services that we're going to be sending to Annapolis delegate, newly-elected delegate. I know you'll service well up there. Just remember, we have a heart in Wycomico County. We need to use it for our school system. Thank you.
My name is Sandra Smith, resident of Wycomico County. I started my tenure with the Board of Education at West Salisbury in 1968. Count it up. I'm not asking what everyone else has asked for. I'm asking you to look at your own personal situation. If you had air conditioning in your home and it went out, what would you do? They have none. If you had heating in your home and it went out, what would you do? If your house needed painting, new shingles, new roof, what would you do? Don't sacrifice our children. Let them become pillars in this community.
Any other comments? Any other council comments? Sorry.
Good evening. I'm John Frederickson, Superintendent of Schools. I live in Wycomico County. And we are very disappointed with the bond proposal that's on your table there, and we respect the decisions of the county executive. And we look forward to working together to do the very best that we possibly can. For me to be able to go with my team to the IAC, the International Agency Committee, on Thursday to advocate for our schools and for our students, I need a letter of support from the county executive, and I need funding from the county board. So I hope that you can find ways to make those things happen. Otherwise, we will lose our place in the lineup. That's just how it works. And while I congratulate all of you on your election or reelection, and I congratulate Mr. Culver on his election, I look forward to the opportunity to sit down and work with our sleeves rolled up to make sure we deliver for our kids. It's critically important, not only for some air conditioning comfort and some technology utilization, but also for a long-range plan of trying to reduce individualized costs for the facilities. We have got to make some adjustments in terms of the number of facilities that we have and the size of the facilities that we operate. If we can do that, we can drive costs out of buildings, out of overhead, and into the classroom, and that's where the real action occurs in our schools. I look forward to talking with you, and if you're ready for a tour, I'd be delighted to guide it. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Good evening. Actually, not going to be speaking about West Side. I'm sure you're very grateful for that. My name is Sean Jester.
Currently Sean, excuse me, but right now this is only on.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were.
It's okay. No, we're not in public comments.
Oh, I'm so.
We've changed the protocol a little bit.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Any other comments on this particular resolution?
My name's John Palmer. I'm a resident of Wycomico County, and I'm also a facility manager at one of our local universities, and I've been doing it for quite some time. A lot of the problems that I've heard these teachers express today at my university, they're handled through the physical plant. My president is responsible to ensure that we have funds in the operational budget of our physical plant. That's her job. The question I have right now, Mr. Frederickson, what's going on with your physical plant? Do you not have enough money for the physical plant to make these day-by-day repairs, like the one teacher with the heater or the leaky pipes? Or perhaps an upgrade, as the one young lady said over here, says she's in construction management? I work in this all the time. These individual items they brought up are not impossible steps to take. They just have to be planned, and they've got to have a good physical plant. And again, my question is something going wrong with your physical plant? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Council comments? Vice President Hawley?
I just actually have a process question.
Excuse me.
For Mr. Baker. One suggestion was to not approve this resolution tonight. In that instance, what would occur? Would there be no borrowing?
No borrowing at all.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Any other council comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor of Resolution 151-2014, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Oppose.
Want to oppose? Chair votes aye. Resolution 151-2014 passes. Thank you, Mr. Baker. Sean, we now would have time for public comments.
I was just so eager to speak with you.
I'm sorry, Sean. Can you hang on one second? I don't want to take a recess, but if we just let everybody exit who need to go. Thank you, Mark. Okay, Sean, thank you. If you could introduce yourself again, thank you.
Yes, my name is Sean Jester. I'm a constituent liaison with Congressman Andy Harris. I work in his office in Salisbury at 212 West Main Street. I'm joined today in the audience by Scott Dewey, who is a community outreach assistant with the congressman. And I just wanted to come today. I was asked by the congressman to pass along his personal congratulations to everyone on the council for your victory and for your willingness to serve and face many difficult questions, starting with tonight, it seems, and also to pass along his thanks to Stevie Prettyman, Shree Sample Hughes, and Gail Barkovich for their service. I'd also like to say that personally, I've been very fortunate to, I'm also fortunate to live here in Salisbury and also working with the congressman. We've had to deal with the council and the county government several times. It's always been fruitful, and I hope that continues. And also like to pass the congressman's congratulations on to Bob Culver, and I hope that we'll be able to work together well for the people of Wycomico County. So thank you very much. I was just so eager to pass all this along, I couldn't wait.
Any other public comments? At this time, we would have council comments. Councilman Davis, would you like to start?
I think I've settled. Thank you. All right. All right, well, I just want to say thank you for this opportunity to serve people of Wycomico County. Would thank my wife, but she left a while ago. You may have heard, my son was probably the youngest member of the audience. He was, he's quite eager and active, so she took him home. So hopefully, they're on their way to bed right now. But I appreciate my family's support during this most recent race, and I appreciate the voters of District 2 for their confidence in me. And I appreciate the work that our, the past council member from District 2, Mrs. Prettyman, did for our district during the campaign. Repeatedly, I heard wherever I would go of what a great job that Stevie did. Are you going to take care of us as good as Stevie did? What's Stevie up to? I mean, you know, they appreciated all the work you did, and if I can do half the job you did, you know, I will feel like I've accomplished something. So thank you for that. And thank you also, Mrs. Barkovich and Sample Hughes, for your work on the council, too. And I look forward to working with the soon-to-be delegates. Our districts overlap slightly, but I think we can definitely find ways to work together. And thank you for everyone on the council for your service, and thank you to my friends Sean Fahy and Bob Lown for helping me out with the campaign. So thank you for that. I also want to say thank you to all the people who commented on this issue that we were kind of thrown into the middle of. I, you know, someone who has a child in public school, I appreciate seeing the passion for quality public education in Wycomico County. During the campaign, I expressed a little bit of disappointment that we seem to see that passion come out most when it's about school buildings, and my real passion is what happens in those buildings. I wish we, my hope is that we will see as much passion to talk about raising Wycomico County's dropout, you know, school graduation rate, that we will, about raising our test scores, about doing those sort of things that happen inside the buildings. The buildings are important, I realize that. And as I mentioned before, I am hopeful that our new county executive will find a way to, you know, fund this building, make it affordable, and, you know, he says he will, and I believe him. But I also want to see a lot of passion about making education better in Wycomico County, not just making our school buildings better. So I look forward to working with everybody on that, and I know that's a passion that's shared by Dr. Frederickson and everybody on the school board and everyone on this council. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Under presidential comments, I would also like to thank everybody for being here tonight. This morning, we saw the installation, not the installation, but the swearing-in of the new county executive. I'd like to congratulate Bob Culver as our new county executive. I would also like to say I was very glad to see that our governor-elect Hogan came down to Wycomico County to be part of that process. It's always good to have an advocate in the governor's office when you're looking for any funding, such as the schools that we're talking about today. And I feel very confident that he's going to do a great job in the state of Maryland. I'm looking forward to the future that he's going to bring for this state. I'd also like, I would be remiss if I also did not express my gratitude for our former first county executive, Rick Pollitt. Rick did an excellent job over these last eight years. He was very dedicated to his job, and I appreciate all the hard effort and the work that he did over those last eight years. I'd also like to express my gratitude to the current council members here, Delegate-Elect Sample Hughes, Stevie Prettyman, and Gail Barkovich for the work that you've done over so many years here recently. You have, you helped keep this county together during one of the largest recessions we've ever seen in decades. And it was no small task for those of you that may not be familiar with what had to be done. Not only were we in a recession, but we saw the state of Maryland crippling the county governments, and Wycomico County survived and will continue to survive. I'm glad to see that now I get to be a part of this transition. It's a pleasure to serve with the council members here today. I would only say that we know that economic growth is a high priority. I think it's our responsibility, not only as on the part of the executive, but this council, to make sure that we grow our economic base. We do the right things to help see our economic base improve so that the funding improves, and we do not have to come back to the public and ask for tax increases, which nobody wants to see done. With that being said, I would just like to say that it is an honor and privilege to be here. I appreciate the opportunity to work with this council, with the executive, and I see great things ahead for Wycomico County and for us, and I can't wait to get started. Thank you very much. And with that being said, I would have to entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.